We'd like to welcome everyone to the work session of the McMinnville City Council this evening, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. I'll call on our city recorder to do a roll call. Claudia?
Counselor Drabkin. Uh, Counselor Geary.
Hello, everyone.
Counselor Stassenz.
Hello, everyone.
Counselor-
It's an echo, it's an echo.
Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Counselor Garvin.
Here.
Council President Minky.
Hello, everyone.
And Mayor Hill.
And I'm here. Thank you for the roll call. Uh, this evening, our work session is, uh, on our Urban Growth Boundary, the UGB remand update process presentation. Heather has just sent out a, uh, set of slides. I'm sure she'll put it up on her share screen. But if you want to pull it up on another, uh, another unit, you might be able to do that. So Heather, I'll turn the time over to you to introduce the topic for our discussion this evening. So, welcome Heather.
Yeah, so, so thank you, Mayor. Um, whoops, excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so actually Amanda's leading tonight's, um, work session. We're going to talk about process. You brought this up at your last work session in terms of, um, how to move forward with public engagement and through the, um, public hearing process. So, um, Amanda and Spencer got together and, um, wanted to have a work session with you as a decision-making body as to how to best do that. So I'm going to turn it over to her. And then if there's time permitting, um, in the work session, uh, we do have some final maps that we sent out to you as executive summary today that we can walk through a little bit.
Thank you, Heather. And, um, Counselor Peralta, if you want to, um, ask your question now that the work session has started, before I get into my report, um, I'm happy to see if we can answer your question that you had.
Well, thanks Amanda. I mean, I just wanted to put on the record that, um, I'd had some correspondence with, uh, Heather about the prospects for protecting some of the native white oak, uh, that is surrounding the city. Um, and the reason for the, the, um, the, the main question that I wanted to ask is whether we should bring that up in the context of, of this hearing or whether that would be something that we would, uh, more appropriately discuss offline. But since it is now something that we're discussing, I guess I'd just say I want to put the email that I sent to Heather on the record, which I will send. Um, and then to just acknowledge that I have concerns as a policymaker about how both the McMinnville City Code and the state of Oregon's land use laws, uh, treat, uh, native white oak in terms of protections relative to other considerations. And, uh, as part of this process, uh, if we have to adopt additional city ordinances to lend some protections to those groves, uh, or, uh, take other steps, uh, I think that should be part of this, uh, dialogue.
Uh, Heather, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Sounds like Counselor Peralta will, um, distribute, uh, the email correspondence.
Yeah, I mean, uh, essentially, um, my response to him was that right now, our UGB work is based on, uh, the policies that are in the record in terms of natural resources and protections of nat- natural resources for the city of McMinnville. Um, we are looking at large protected, um, habitats identified by the state. Um, but in terms of the smaller habitats that are within the city limits and the city UGB, protecting them when development occurs is something we should really be discussing in terms of a development code program.
I just wanted to state for the record that Counselor Drabkin is now online.
Um, so with that, I'll go ahead and, um, get into our discussion today about the process for the UGB amendment. So thank you, Mayor and Counsel Amanda Guile-Hinman, City Attorney, for the record. Tonight, staff will be reviewing the proposed public outreach schedule with counsel. Um, at the last work session, councilors expressed a desire for more public outreach and input on the proposed UGB amendment and accompanying map. It is imperative for the city, both at the staff level and the council, to ensure that public, the public is well-informed about decisions being contemplated by the council while also remaining in compliance with state land use laws. Counsel will be undertaking a quasi-judicial land use process when it considers the UGB amendment. This means that the council is acting in the role of a judge, considering only the evidence submitted through written and oral testimony and provided through a public hearing process, and applying that evidence to the relevant policies, standards, and regulations that govern UGB amendments. So I'm going to share my screen here. Oh, uh, Claudia, can you give me the ability to share my screen? Thanks. So can, it looks, on my screen, it looks like I'm showing you guys the UGB outreach schedule. Um, so staff are proposing the following schedule to educate the public about the proposed UGB amendment, so that the public is well-informed prior to the public hearings before counsel, where the counsel will hear evidence. The outreach to specific groups and the general public are educational opportunities for the public to learn about the proposed UGB amendment prior to the public hearings. Counselors must not attend these meetings so as to avoid any ex parte contacts or confusion about whether or not the information sessions are public hearings. To reiterate, the public information sessions and the outreach to particular groups outlined in this schedule are not public hearings. Attendance at those meetings will not give a person standing to participate in future court proceedings. The proposed public hearings are, are tentatively scheduled for December first, second, and third. So as you can see from this schedule, um, staff are planning outreach to five different groups, the Chamber of Commerce, Thousand Friends, Friends of Yankton County, the Rotary, and Kiwanis, and then four informational sessions at different times and at different days to hopefully accommodate for different people's schedules. With that, then, we are proposing that the council schedule three days for public hearing testimony to ensure that we give, um, citizens enough opportunity to present evidence to the council. Uh, those days would be December first, second, and third, with a first reading scheduled for December third, and then a second reading on December eighth, assuming that we need a second reading. Um, in convert, in, uh, talking with Yankton County's Board of Commissioners, with Yankton County's staff, it looks like the Board of Commissioners can then hear, um, do their public hearing and their meeting either on Thursday, December tenth, or Thursday, December seventeenth, um, whichever works out for their noticing requirements. They're still, um, finalizing that, but it'll either be the December tenth or December seventeenth, assuming that we stick with our schedule. Um, so with that, if, uh, we're, what staff is looking for is direction from counsel if this schedule, um, will work for councilors and if we can move forward with these scheduled, um, information sessions and also, um, the public hearings as we've outlined them.
Well, let's just open it up to, um, uh, councilors. And do you see any conflicts? Or do you have any, um, additional questions or discussions around this proposed schedule that's on our screen? Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Guile-Hinman, Ms. Richards, Mister, Mister, everyone. Um, only question, I guess one question and then maybe some follow-ups to that. Don't we, can you remind me, don't we have a deadline in which this needs to be submitted by?
I don't know if Heather wants to take that one, but basically the state is, um, not outright requiring us, but basically requiring us to have this all done by the end of the calendar year, which is why we need to get our hearings done so Yankton County can take its action. Because basically, the next Thursdays after that are December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve, and December thirty-first, New Year's Eve. So the likelihood they're going to have meetings those days is not very likely.
I have a question. Um, since, uh, these meetings, I'll ask a clarifying question first. Counselors are not to attend public information sessions, correct?
Correct.
Um, does that have, or is there any bearing of, um, the upcoming election on that? Meaning, do those who are running for city council have any need to be concerned about also attending those? Um, or having to potentially recuse themselves in, um, future readings? And that's just for clarity, because I have no idea how that would, uh, be affected.
Sure. So if, that's a great question. So if this, um, does not get, if a decision is not made by the council, uh, by the end of December and new councilors come, are seated, and then this comes before those new councilors, they would all have to disclose any ex parte contact that they have, which would include attending these meetings. They would have to disclose the information that's provided in those meetings or any discussions that they had. So I would, I'm, my recommendation would be that they also, if, if it's likely that this wouldn't be adopted by the end or decided on by the end of the calendar year, that they also not participate. Um, if it is decided by the end of the calendar year, then they are more than able to do so as citizens.
Does, did that answer your question, Remy?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Any other questions? From Remy? Okay. Okay, let's go back to Zach.
Thanks. Um, so with that deadline that we're trying to hit at the end of the year, I know this is really jam-packed, but, uh, and also not having a baseline of comparison to know that, oh, the last time I did this, we need to, should have had more time. Um, if things pop up in the December first, second, third, um, and that need to affect our ability to have the second hearing, or if there's more discussion, if there's anything that needs to pop up and change, I, this is really tight. Do you feel like, what type of changes could need to be made? And does this allow us enough time to also do those? Potentially re-have hearings or, or involve the public in any changes to that at the end? And then still feel like we engaged the public, changed, listened, changed, engaged the public again, and then got back on track with deadline? I, I feel like this is a really super tight, tight one.
It is a tight deadline. Um, staff are committed to getting this done by the end of the calendar year. And council has the ability to either, you know, let's say we're in the process and wants to either continue the public hearing or close the public hearing, but keep the record open for additional information. Council has the ability to do that and also schedule additional meetings. And you don't have, council doesn't have to do it, obviously, on the set Tuesdays. So, um, if it takes additional meetings in December, staff are committed to doing that, um, as long as we can get the council's schedule to align.
Yeah, and if I may, Amanda, it's so, um, this is a suggested deadline just to get us, uh, started into the public process, like any other public. This doesn't have a statutory, um, regulatory, um, timeframe that we need to perform to. Um, so just like any other process, if you're not comfortable, you need more time for deliberation, you, we can build that into the schedule. We can continue to add meetings throughout December. If we need to go into January, February, uh, we can do that as well. The reason why, when we first met with the state and talked to them about the direction that we've gotten to do the remand, um, back in February, that we had a goal to get it through the local process by the end of the calendar year this year, was that the state then needs to go through a review process as well, and LCDC needs to review it. And they could be challenged at that level. And the concern is it will languish in the review and challenge process to the point where it's past the planning horizon, and then everyone's very uncomfortable with that.
Understood. And I, I thank you for that. I understand also that, um, I, I appreciate the deadline and moving towards that. And there's a lot to do before that, and it's all involving a bunch of different people. And so I also understand there's probably a little bit of, uh, calculus in playing the odds on that Board of Commissioners meeting in when we're trying to get it done. So, um, o- other than just, I feel like often we get down to the eleventh hour and there's a big kink in the chain and we want to change something, but we don't have the opportunity or the runway to do it. It always just kind of feels awkward at that last moment. But if, but if, if there's still the levity in our decision-making process that if something were to come up at the eleventh hour, we still have the flexibility to do that, which I'm hearing we-
Yeah, you see, you don't, you don't have the hundred and twenty-day clock that you have with land use decisions. Um, what we will do is probably advise you, so if it gets down to, I mean, as, as a decision-making body, you're making decisions and weighing out pros and cons and consequences and stuff like that. So as staff, what we'll be doing is advising you, this is, to be able to do that, this is what it will take in terms of process and time. Um, you know, this is what we see as the impact. And we can continue to have those dialogues as we go.
Okay.
So you can make informed decisions about what you want to do.
Yeah, uh, other than this, that general concern over anything at the last minute and, and, but moving that out is a potential option if something were to come up. Otherwise, this looks great, and I appreciate staff making a great effort and communicating it to when we're gonna, and how we're gonna involve the public on that. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I will, I will say there's a lot of people on, on the meeting right now who are probably very interested in this process. Um, so the, the biggest concern is the, um, if something comes up significant in public hearing that we would need to go into amend and then get the, get the information out for reviews, for consideration. Um, that's a very tight timeframe. And if that does happen, we would probably recommend pushing out the, the, um, meetings after, uh, the public hearing.
Understood, thanks. That's all my questions.
Any other questions from counsel?
Uh, this is Counselor Garvin, and I just want to say that Zach pretty much said everything I had to say. At, at first glance, the timeframe seems a little aggressive, but if we have the ability to move things out if need be, then I'm, I'm fine with what's laid out.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, Heather, can you remind me what the, uh, plan, uh, planning horizon that you mentioned, the, for the full, uh, process to be done, including LCDC that you've mentioned? We want to give ample time for that second leg of the process.
Well, we don't really have a flag in the sand, and I can't second-guess what's going to happen at the state level. Um, I can just tell you, each step is, you know, in the past, has been six to months to twelve months, and that's without significant challenge. So, um, looking at that and not understanding what the challenges may or may not be when we sat down and put together a calendar for this. And legally, we can move forward with this planning horizon in a remand. Um, DLCD staff's concern was, you know, what does it say about the Oregon land use system if we're stuck in the system for longer than the planning horizon that we're trying to achieve? So, um, so that was a concern there. And we just started talking about how do, how do we move forward with this in a timely manner? Start putting things together and, and getting through different critical milestones. So that's, that's where the discussion of timeframe came from. Um, our planning horizon is two thousand and three to twenty twenty-three.
And can you, um, can you also, uh, I know that you, you had involved some communication with the public even to this point before October fourteenth. Can you talk a little bit about what you guys have done? Has that been, uh, has there been anything formal in incorporating or in talking with the public at this point? Or will these be the first really reach-outs about this? Other than our city council meeting updates that, of course, is public record?
Yeah, so other than, other than what's been public record with the work sessions that we've been trying to do with you on a monthly basis, and we did it for two reasons, to keep you apprised of what was going on, but also to keep the public apprised in, in, um, this new era of COVID, um, and posting it online. We really haven't had formal structure for, um, information sharing about this project yet. This will be, this will be the launch of it, uh, tomorrow with the Chamber of Commerce. And the reason it's tomorrow is because that was the only date they had. I reached out to stakeholders and partners, um, after your meeting that you had, uh, at the last work session. And just said, you know, this is coming up. Uh, we will be at a place where we'll have final, um, recommendations, and I want to, you know, share it with you and get the info. Counsel wants to make sure that people have the opportunity to get informed on the project and be able to participate. Um, we think the participation is going to be a public hearing process, and so I wanted to start setting up meetings. And so that's what we've been doing. And I want to let, um, people know that outside of the four public information sessions, which is what we wanted to make a commitment to, we're happy to meet with any service club who calls and wants information, wants us to come and give a presentation. Our goal is to get the information out as much as possible.
And I really appreciate that. You guys have done a really good job of, of, uh, having opportunities for people to learn about what it is, what is, is before the public hearing. I think that's going to help a lot. Um, also, in the actual public hearing, are those going to be noticed as three days for a certain, uh, hours? Or what, how will those three days be noticed for the public? And I'll, I'll explain why I'm asking. So say somebody wants to give public hearing, but they can only make it on the third, and they're like planning on going on the third. Well, that definitely-
We did, when we talked about this as a team, um, we expected it would be more than one night's worth of testimony, and, um, definitely wanted to honor, uh, the discussion that we've heard in the past about meetings going too long and things like that. So we thought, and, and especially with, you know, this Zoom meeting environment, um, we thought we would set up three consecutive nights and let people decide which night they want to participate in. I, I'm, I'm just saying that out loud as a process person. Amanda might have a different ideas from legal procedures, but that's one of the things we talked about in terms of how to make it more convenient for people.
Yeah, I echo exactly what Heather said, is that we'll notice it or that people can provide testimony any of those three nights, assuming that that's, you know, that counsel can all make those three nights work for public hearings. And so any night that a person attends, they, that would count towards, you know, their public testimony in a public hearing. And also, of course, people would be able to submit written testimony and oral testimony, and that would also be part of the record for consideration by counsel.
Great. And so we'd just go on those particular nights as long as it took to hear everybody on that night. So like three public hearings, but all of them will be considered equally public, uh, testimony. Okay? Great, well, thank you. I, I, uh, it is a tight schedule, but I understand why. And I appreciate all the work that you guys have done. I know it's been very time-consuming, uh, and, um, it's very well-done. So I'm looking forward to being a part of the process.
Other questions? Discussion? Go ahead, Zach.
Thanks. Um, Heather, do you think, that, will you own and, and you talked about potentially, oh, if, uh, you know, the Lions call and want you to come talk to them, you'll add that to the list? Were you, are you going to kind of own and maintain this on like that, your McMinnville Matters page? Or, or-
Yeah, so after, um, after, if, if, based on your direction tonight, we didn't want to get in front of you, um, though I did with the Chamber of Commerce, and I apologize about that. Um, and the service clubs, but, uh, we, what we'll do is we'll post this process and especially the public information sessions, um, as well as the service clubs and things like that, on our Groey McMinnville Mindfully website. We'll also get out press releases and things of that nature. So we'll treat it like we would normally with open houses where we're getting the word out as much as possible. Um, we're just going to be conducting everything via Zoom.
Okay. Again, any other questions? Okay, again, this is the schedule, uh, meeting with public, and then our public, uh, hearings associated with that. And then we will be moving, uh, over and having our discussion with the county. And then they go through their same process of public, uh, a public meeting. And then we hopefully can come back by, uh, well, we've, the schedule would show before the end of the year so that we can move the full document on. Okay, with that being said, then Heather, I think you have a presentation?
Yeah, if you're interested, I can let you know. We are in a final draft product at this point in time for our recommendation to you. Um, it is what we'll be, what we will be sharing, starting tomorrow, um, with the Chamber of Commerce and other groups. So, um, I wanted to, if you had, wanted to take the time, walk you through it a little bit. Um, I don't have all the details on the slides, pretty high-level, because I didn't expect a lot of time, so.
Okay.
So I'll share my screen. Okay, what are you guys seeing? I, I see a security alert.
Nope, you, you, you've got your screen up with the preview on the left-hand side. Now you've got, you've got, uh, your screen, uh, the screen up, and then the next slide over on the right.
Okay, thank you.
There's a YouTube video of Tom Brady highlights.
Not Tom Brady anymore, I'm sorry. He, he moved on, so did I. Um, okay, so, uh, Groey McMinnville Mindfully, and just to remind everyone, we do have a website dedicated to this that where we are updating, um, information there, um, and posting all of our presentations. But, um, we are planning for a planning horizon of two thousand and three to twenty twenty-three. The population forecast is forty-four thousand fifty-five people that's in this plan. Um, and that's an increase of fifteen thousand five hundred people, uh, equating to six thousand dwelling units. The housing supply target for this was sixty percent single-family and forty percent multifamily. And that's increasing, um, what existed at the time and what exists still today, uh, from about a, uh, sixty-five thirty-five split. So we're, we're moving into a higher-density overall product line. Our density target is five point seven dwelling units per gross buildable residential acre. The employment forecast in twenty twenty-three was twenty-two thousand new employees during this planning horizon. And, um, that would be an increase of seven thousand two hundred and forty. But I think now looking at that, I inverted two numbers, it's supposed to be seven thousand four hundred and twenty. I will fix that. So what that means is, in terms of total additional acres needed in the McMinnville UGB for that time period, um, in the end, it is nine hundred and twenty-four acres. Um, it's eight hundred and eighteen, uh, gross buildable acres for residential use in the city of McMinnville. These, these are our comp plan destinations. So in the city of McMinnville, our residential use, use also includes, uh, parks, churches, uh, semi-public uses, and public infrastructure is in there. Commercial use is a hundred and six acres, and that, that had a focus of office space, uh, commercial, retail, and then neighborhood-serving commercial. And then industrial, um, in terms of industrial acreage, where we showed a surplus of forty-six acres. Um, but the city made a decision that they wanted to retain that surplus of industrial land, the forty-six, forty-six acres to achieve its economic development strategy. Um, and so then, what, how, this is an interesting process because there's been an amendment already under this plan to achieve some of the need. So we, by state law, we need to show how we are meeting the need of the city in this planning horizon. And we've been working on this, as I said, since nineteen ninety-four. So in two thousand and four, we did amend the UGB to show partial, to accommodate the need partially with two hundred and fifty-nine acres. That, in the residential areas, that included two hundred and seventeen acres of residential, um, use and forty-two acres of the McMinnville High School site. So that leaves five hundred and fifty-nine acres, uh, in terms of need still, and then the hundred and six. So that's a total need now in what we're calling the Phase Two Amendment of six hundred and sixty-five acres. And you'll note that this is less than what we originally brought to you. We've been working, um, through the numbers and trying to figure out how to create more efficiencies. And I'll walk you through some of those decisions. So our final map that we're bringing to you has a recommendation after going through the process and doing all the findings, um, and working through the direction of the court decision is the one you see in front of you. And this was, this is a modified version of Map One, the alternative Map One we brought to you last month. You had given us direction to pursue Map Two, um, which had less, more land on either side of the city, more or less, in terms of east and west. It had some land where, where we call Three Mile Lane. But after we finished, um, doing the, I told my team, just keep working the, the problem, let's just keep working the problem through all the different legal tests and decision-making points, and let that lead us to a final. And after doing that, this is the final map that we feel meets the legal test and will serve the city. So it is, um, a concentration in the southwest area. Um, it's less land in the end, and it brings- Um, it's less land in the end and it brings in more exception areas. So this map has three additional exception areas in it, in addition to the three that were already brought in in two thousand and four. It has Riverside North, um, what we call Booth Bend, and then the old um, old Sheridan Road exception area. It also includes some areas that the petitioners, uh, when we were going through, through the Court of Appeals process suggested we look at, which is this area right here, um, that's just south of, south of the Evergreen Campus. We are recommending bringing that in as well. Um, and then also this piece right here, which is Norton Lane West. So what we tried to do is look at the court record, of which there's like seventeen hundred pages. We went through all the objections that have occurred on this project uh since the beginning. And there's about five hundred pages of that. And then went through the laws at the time, which were from two thousand two and two thousand and three. And then um, the court direction, and this is what we came up with. And we're finalizing the findings for this right now. So um, in the end, this is our study area map. We studied every single one of these areas based on the court direction. And you will see, um, it's a variety of different soil classifications. So um, we talk about soils in terms of class one, two, three, four, five, and six, in terms of the high-value farmland and the highest numbers, the highest priority to protect. So class one soils are the highest priority to protect, and those are what you see in red. Excuse me. Um, and then orange is class two, yellow is class three, and green is class four. So outside of the exception areas, we're surrounded by high-value farmland. And that's, that's why it's such a tight legal test to get through this. This shows um what it looks like in terms of class. So then each study area, we took a major, we did a clap, we did a soils data analysis. And then the majority is what sort of landed that study area into a different soil classification, which is important because that will be part of our legal process in terms of how we apply the need that I just shared with you. So green is the exception areas, uh, red again is class one, and then class two is orange and class three is yellow. And then we then divided that up into our different studies. So the court's direction was you need to look at these in terms of layers. So you look at a layer of classification first and you apply your city need to that and you, and if, see if you can meet your city need within that first layer. And then if you still have need left, then you go to the next layer and so on and so on. And the court, and there's a two-part test to deciding if it meets the need. I apologize, I have a frog in my throat. Um, one is um whether the land is adequate to meet the need um for the city. And that's the test that's described in the court decision. And then if it's, and then after that, you look at the lands that are considered adequate for suitability. And then if you can't meet all your need in the first layer, you go to the next layer. So green was the first layer that we looked at, yellow was the second layer, and then we never got past the yellow. Because we found we met our need in the yellow. And the reason being for that is that this parcel right here, West Hill South, is one of the only parcels in the yellow that didn't have uh significant issues with it in terms of the legal test and review. But to actually bring this in and urbanize it, all the infrastructure that serves this is coming from the Cozine Creek area. And so it comes through these three red parcels. And so the law says if you have to serve a higher priority land with lower priority lands, then the lower priority lands can come in to serve that. And so that's where we ended up with the southwest area. And, and that's why we didn't even get to this area to study it. So we never, we never got to a full study of the red layer because we had already established all our need after we had finished studying the green and yellow layers. So what that means in terms of the total land designation is um right here in terms of how, how we're meeting the nine hundred and twenty-four acres, we're a little bit less there. Um, and, and how it's being divided up. You will note that we do have some industrial land that we're recommending uh come into the city. And that's one of our land use efficiencies. Um, we are recommending that the city rezone forty-six acres of industrial land that's within the city right now to commercial land. And then, once we made that recommendation, uh, based on the fact that the city wanted to retain uh the forty-six acre surplus, we reviewed those layers of land here, um, for whether there was industrial land that could meet the need. And in this first layer of green, we found industrial land right here that can meet the need, which is an exception area called Riverside North. So it's right behind Cascade Steel, um, it's bounded by the wastewater treatment plant. It's adjacent to industrial uses and it's easily served. So we're recommending this exception area actually come in as industrial, to meet the industrial need. And that, and by doing that, we were able to bring in more exception land um and reduce our reliance on resource land. The reason why we looked at the highway um frontage on south of Highway eighteen is it's actually been part of a area planning process that's underway right now. ODA is currently traffic modeling this. Um, but the recommendation in the area planning process was to rezone this to commercial. And the basis for that is the expense of serving this land with infrastructure is just cost prohibitive for industrial development to move forward. Um, and uh, and so, but we don't want to lose all the industrial land. This is really nice industrial land out here. So the discussion was if we confront it with commercial development, it can carry the infrastructure costs built to and through to here where industrial can then um connect to it and build out this area back here as industrial uses and connecting with here. And this is meant to be a whole sort of light industrial campus area. We've been testing that with industrial users and um, and they're very interested in that concept. So another piece of the plan, um, that was in, in the original plan, but not fully vetted out and that the petitioners had concerns about was we have a zone that uh, we, we don't have many comp plan designations. We have a residential one, industrial one, and commercial one, and floodplain. And a lot of communities will have residential comp plan designations that are RL, RM, RH, meaning low density, medium density, high density. McMinnville has a long history of intentional smart growth planning by using planned developments. Where you have, and it has policies where it talks about not wanting to segregate different types of housing products. Um, and so using the one residential comp plan designation with planned developments has been a means of achieving that. However, we also have need in our housing need analysis that talks about the need for different housing types. So higher density versus lower density. And how is this city going to ensure that it's meeting that need in the, that's been identified in the housing needs analysis with the one comp plan designation? So what we're recommending and what a lot of other communities have done very successfully is creating what's called an urban holding comp plan designation. And what that means is it comes into the UGB um, anywhere where it's intended to be residential development as an urban holding designation. And then this land is then goes through an area planning process. So this is kind of like the Neighborhood Activity Center discussion, but it happens after the UGB and land need discussion. Um, and it goes through an area planning process. We then describe where we would like to see the different higher-level concepts occur. Um, we adopt that as a city as an area plan. And then we require properties over twenty acres to do a master plan to annex into the city. And the master plan needs to meet the covenants of the area plan. So this has been successfully deployed in many communities. And what it does is it, it helps this community as a whole decide what these will look like. Um, and I think this community will like that because of, you know, the engagement piece and, and concerns that happened up here. The community participates in the area planning. And then the property owner and developer have some certainty as to the fact that the community supports that when they're doing their master planning underneath that umbrella and coming into the city. The other interesting part is um, the city has had a history of annexation by vote here. And one of the premises behind, before, one of the things that needed to occur before the annexation by um vote, ballot vote, was that the uh property owner needed to show a master plan and that was shared with the community so they could vote on it for annexation. So this still incorporates that process, even though annexation is no longer by vote, it will come to city council. But the mass, the master plan requirement will still ensure that that process is moving forward. So that's phase, that's the first piece of that, that process. The second piece is, though, you still need some sort of idea of how, how did you city decide this was your need? Outside of just the data and, and the science of the number of acres. And so we are developing, and this is not the plan yet, we're still working on this. We're developing what's called a framework plan. That sort of walks through that based on what the data and screening criteria show us as to where we think the high-level concepts can drop on the property. Um, and the framework plan is submitted as part of the overall UGB package as a plan, but it's not adopted separately. So it's not a binding document in terms of this needs to happen right here, but it informs the area planning process. And this has been done successfully in other communities too. This is the Redmond Framework Plan. Um, so we're recommending doing that and are putting that together as part of this package. It's, it's a similar concept to the Neighborhood Activity Centers. That was the um backbone of, of the McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan. And this is building upon that. We're going to still use that stuff in the Neighborhood Activity Centers. But it's how it's being used legally within the process and the procedures of this UGB discussion um that's being changed a little bit. So it's going to come in through, um, this will be more of a land use process after the UGB amendment. And the need's been identified simply by how much uh gross buildable acres we need for residential development based on our targeted units per acre. So um, and so you will see a comp plan map, some, well, actually, this is probably the comp plan map you're going to see. We're in draft form right now, but this will come forward to you as well for the UGB area. So what does this mean? Um, what this means is that forty-four percent of the overall UGB amendment, so this is Phase One and Phase Two combined, um, is forty-four percent of the area is exception area. Um, eight percent is class four to class six soils, which isn't surprising because we don't have a lot of that around us. Uh, class three soils are about nineteen and a half percent, and then class two soils are twenty-eight percent. Um, what that means though is most of the soil surrounding the city of McMinnville is class two soils. And seventy-two percent of this UGB amendment is not. So it's worked really hard to try to stay away from the high resource areas. Looking at where development can occur that meets the legal test, that meets the need of the city of McMinnville in terms of its future growth needs. Uh, let's see, some other interesting statistics. Uh, so this, this UGB amendment um accounts for uh two tenths of one percent of Yam Hill County's overall acreage, the amount of acreage that is in Yam Hill County. This is two tenths of one percent, and again, that's the total package Phase One and Phase Two. And then in terms of EFU land, um, this UGB amendment, and this is the whole package again, is four tenths of one percent of Yam Hill County's exclusive farm use land. So that's, that's the big picture. We're working on um all of the findings for this and the supportive materials. We will be getting out what we call a PAPA notice to the state. That's the notice if, based on the direction tonight of having a public hearing starting on December one. We are striving to get our PAPA notice out by October twenty-sixth, um, which means we will have our documents done by then in draft form. And then my hope is, much like in the past, um, large discussions that you've had as a decision-making body, we are going to try and get you a final draft for consideration for the public hearing uh, two weeks in advance of the public hearing. Um, because we definitely want to get it to you before the Thanksgiving holiday break. Um, and we might get to you a week before the Thanksgiving holiday break, so you're not spending your holiday break reading it. Um, and we also want everyone else to have the opportunity to, to read the final drafts too at that time. So. That's what I have.
Well, thank you, Heather. And again, from our last work session, tremendous more work. And I know this is a work in progress, you know, and it, and you're trying to anticipate how best to bring this before us. Uh, I, uh, as I read this and uh went back to some of my other notes, um, I'm, I'm so, um, I'm so appreciative that we've brought in those exception areas that um, the Thousand Friends had indicated they would like to see us bring in. And um, so with that being said, I think we'll just open it up for comments or questions from the council. Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for the presentation. And we don't have a ton of time, but I noticed um where you ended up on the draft UGB proposal. And I know it's not where we were hoping to point towards. Um, so, but I see a lot of that, the southwest land, the O-six, R-one, uh, yeah. So the, the southwest area, kind of in that triangle between Hill and Old Sheridan. Uh, and maybe I missed it, I apologize. This, I did, first time I'm reading through this. Um, I know there's that, that, the PV reservoir is over there, kind of between the existing end of the development there. Alexandria Street comes and bends around and Nicole Street or Drive comes and bends in there too. And there's a, there's a section there that's, that's always labeled the PV, PV reservoir. And I've, I've trotted around there a little bit, but have you studied how that area can affect the?
Oh, they've already started the meeting? Oh, this is the, uh.
Can you mute who just came on? Thank you.
Um, so Zach, I'm not exactly sure what you're referencing. Um, I can tell you that we have looked at all the wetlands within the, the, all the study areas. Uh, we've looked at the drainage areas uh in all the study areas. The southern boundary of this uh recommendation is the Cozine Creek center line. Um, and the basis for that is, is actually to protect the floodplain area. And it was another land use efficiency. Um, there, there is a, um, there's park land need in the uh overall need. And we felt that um, there was some opportunity to look at a greenway park along uh Cozine Creek uh in some areas that weren't as, they were buildable, but they weren't as um beneficial to development. So we thought that that would be a, a great asset to have. I'm not sure, you'll have to point me exactly what reservoir you're talking about. I'm not, I'm not sure of that.
I don't, I mean, reservoir might be a bad term, but that's what I've always seen it labeled on maps and, and just reference points. So um, I, I'm happy to send you, there's kind of, as you, if you were coming on up Old Sheridan to connect up to Peabody and you took a left, there's a few like old farmhouse there on large plots. It's sort of direct behind those to the west is right around there. Um, I, I can, I can point that out. I just.
Recommended expansion doesn't come all the way down to Peabody?
Uh, PV, sorry, P, PV, it's PV Road there. When it turns around from Old Sheridan to head towards Discovery, it's PV Road. No, I didn't mean.
There's a, there's a huge reservoir up on Fox Ridge. That's the only one I'm aware of.
Yeah, again, I think, I think reservoir is a wrong term, but it's, there's a, there's a little body of, a little kidney of water or wetland there. So if you're accounting for it, great. I just, I just want to make sure that's getting in the calculus.
Yeah, it looks like Chuck is aware of what you're talking about, so he might want to weigh in.
Yeah. Hi, counselors. Um, and Zach, you're referring to the.
I'm Zach.
Sorry, you specifically because you asked the question. Yeah, the PV reservoir is right along the south edge of the existing UGB. Um, and so it's between that and what was the southwest O-six air, study area? Um, that, that area is in the floodplain, and so it's included in the floodplain uh within the current proposal. But it would be in that floodplain area, so designated as unbuildable.
So you, so you've got it in your calculus, so just in, label those floodplain? Okay.
And, and in our, in our calculus of floodplain, so one, one of the tests, I told you, there's several different tests we have to walk through. One test is defining what's buildable, not buildable, and the state law tells us that. Um, and floodplains are defined as not buildable. We, we don't allow development in floodplain zones in the city of McMinnville. We actually have a comp plan designation for that. Um, so that, so we, uh, there are, there is floodplain in this UGB amendment, but it's coming, that, to recommend to come in, but it's not considered buildable acreage.
Thanks.
Other questions? Other questions? I'll call one more time, other questions from councilors or discussion items?
I just, again, we just wanted to express my appreciation, Heather, for the thinking that went into trying to save some more of the areas around the Cozine in the plan. That was the first indication that I'd heard of that, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Again, so again, this is just an update of all the good work that the planning department's been putting in. And I truly understand that they have been putting long hours to get us to this point. Because the earlier we can start those community discussions, keeps us on plan. And it's so critical for us to be aware of that schedule and the plan that we're trying to hit. So I think if there's no further questions, and Heather, you've made the update and we've seen that, we'll just, we'll on that path and, and see, we're not going to attend, but see that you're going to be able to go out and have community discussions and bring back further thoughts and ideas. And, and the whole intent is to get us to a point where we can have a public hearing over those three nights and, and bring this to a point where everyone that has wanted to have a input on it can do that. So anything from your perspective that we need to do further this evening?
No, but I did, I did want to share with you, we, we're very cognizant of the city council's wish that this reflect the community's engagement. And so one of the things we did was go back through all the public engagement pieces that, that built into this project. So we need to remember this, this did start in nineteen ninety-four. And there was a visioning process that occurred called McNville twenty twenty that informed the McNville Growth Management Organization Plan. So that visioning process was a couple of years, I believe, from what I can tell from the record. And had a lot of surveys and open houses and things like that. And then ended up with a final plan document that talked about what the vision was for McNville. So we've been, we've been sort of, you know, we're going, we test back, it's truth and verify, right? And so we're, we're testing back all the time back into those types of documents to make sure that it's reflecting what the community wanted to see happen with this particular project and this long-range planning horizon. And interestingly, it's very reflective of discussions that we've heard that our team, most of us are new, a new generation of planners from McNville, that we've heard here in the last couple of years as well. And so it's indicative of the fact that that value system has really sort of carried through McNville for many years now. And we'll bring some of that to you as part of the public hearing process so that, so that you can see that connection.
Thank you, Heather. So with that closing, we will adjourn our work session. And why don't we take a five-minute break and then we'll open back up into our regular city council. So we'll break for five minutes, guys.